You guys ready? All right, everybody set? We have very important stuff we're talking about there, all right? I can call this meeting, welcome everybody back after the two-week break. Call this meeting on July 15th to order. Ask the board to call the roll. Here.
Here.
All right, and Leroy, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes. Hand over heart, ready to begin. The pledge is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, and without any division, or to the liberty of its own.
Okay, we need a motion on the minutes of Tuesday, June 24th. Been moved and seconded, we're ready to vote. The minutes have been approved, and Mr. Powers, agenda review.
Thank you Chair Bennett, a few items. Item 29, County Executive Office Public Hearing Regarding Adoption of the Amendment to the 2013-16 MOA with IUOE. A letter of advice has been submitted by Hayward Merricks, the third Chair of the Civil Service Commission. Item 30, Public Works, Adoption of a Resolution by the Board of Directors of the Lake Sherwood Community Service District of an Application to Request LAFCO to Initiate Divestiture of Power to Provide Water Services. A revised Board Letter and a Comment Letter from Nathan Boren have been submitted. Item 41, CEO's Office, Public Hearing Regarding Adoption of the Amendment to the 2014-17 MOA with VCPPOA, Patrol Bargaining Unit. Letter of advice has been submitted by Hayward Merricks, Chair of Civil Service Commission. And finally, item 42, Public Works Agency, Adoption of a Resolution of Intention to Vacate a Portion of Santa Ana Road, Negura Avenue, and Avonall Street, Request to Continue to August 5th, 2014. And all documents have been distributed and posted.
Board members, any changes to the agenda? From your perspective, we're ready for a motion to accept the agenda as modified.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded, we're ready to vote. All right, and now, it's a real pleasure, I'd like to invite Sean and Amanda Maxson, foster parents, to come up, and we've had a real joy hearing from foster parents here once a month in the boardroom, and welcome Sean, appreciate you being here.
Hi, I'm Sean Maxson, I'm a foster parent here in Ventura. I just want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak to you guys today. Like I said, I'm Sean Maxson, my wife and I, we grew up in Ventura. I attended high school at Buena, she attended at Foothill High, and we met at Ventura Missionary Church's youth group, and married in 2008.
Sean, could you do us a favor, what, we have your wife come down with your foster child, I think it'll just, it'll help the inspiration, if that's okay, all right?
Want to bring Elijah in?
Oh, all right, if he's eating, that's whatever's coming forward. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, so this is my wife Amanda Maxson. So yeah, we left briefly for college, and returned in 2011, so you can imagine that Ventura County is special to us, it has a fond place in our heart, it is our home. So we've been driven by our mutual faith and conviction to fulfill a biblical mandate to care for orphans, so early in our relationship Amanda and I began to speak about the idea of foster care. And in doing that, we, about a year and a half ago, we were fortunate enough to be able to purchase a home in East Ventura. And that allowed us, the extra space allowed us to start the process of foster care and becoming licensed. Not too long after that happened, we, I think it was about a week, we got our first placement. He was a little boy, born with a congenital heart defect. My wife is a cardiac nurse at Community Memorial Hospital, so it was a perfect fit. He was unable to, he was one years old and unable to crawl, eat orally, and due to his condition, he had a severe developmental delay. At this time, I was working as a computer technician for the Ventura County Office of Education, and it became apparent to us pretty quickly that foster kids can have a significant need, and so we decided, as a family, that we needed a stay-at-home parent, and I was happy to take the position. So I'm happy to stand here now and report that he is able to walk, eat, talk, just like any other two-year-old boy, and boy, he eats, you can see it right there. He brings just a lot of joy and love and warmth to our home, and we're happy to say that we're in the process of being able to adopt him, so that's exciting for us. His progress has been nothing less than astounding, and it's been neat to watch. Since our first placement, we've had five more children in just over a year, and they've ranged from ages one to eight. Each has brought us unique challenges and rewarding moments. People often comment to us that they wouldn't be able to do what we do, but my response to them, well, they say that they're, that taking in a stranger's child is, and caring for them as if it were their own, and then returning them, watching them go, is just too hard. My response to them is that, it may be hard, yes it is hard, but the pain of, is the pain of watching them go worse than ignoring the need and the conviction that we have to care for them. I've consoled foster kids through night terrors, bouts of homesickness, trips to the yard, and much more. It's been very challenging, but as I wrote this speech, I watched a five-year-old boy on the floor of our living room, smiling, laughing, and playing with my old matchbox cars. His world was shattered just a couple of weeks ago, and I watched, as I watched him, I knew that any inconvenience this may cause me is worth giving him a safe and happy home for a time. With these motivations in mind, and with the support of a great community of family, friends, and other foster families, we feel that we are truly able to make a difference in the lives of these beautiful kids. Thank you for letting me share my heart, or our heart for foster with you guys. Thank you.
Sean and Amanda, thank you very much for being foster parents, for taking the time to come this morning early as if you didn't have anything else to do today with the children at your home. And when you think about those five children, that, like you said, you have to be ready to deal with the pain of them leaving, but what you've done for, you know, these children is nothing short of exactly what God wants us to do with these people, you know, to help. So thank you, this is, we're trying to really inspire people to become foster parents. You're an inspiration when you come and talk like this today.
Thank you.
And you're really fortunate to be at Missionary Church, they're really stepping up on this whole foster care program, so we have a church that's trying to become the cornerstone church of Western Ventura County, and Eastern Ventura County Cornerstone has really led the way on foster care. So we really hope that Missionary can do that, and we'll try to stay in touch and do everything we can to try to help that happen, but hopefully you guys can be a big part of taking the whole missionary congregation to that next level and stuff. But you're certainly an inspiration, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I want to thank you two young role models, thank you so much for the good work that you're doing with the community and the foster children. Thank you again.
Also, just thank you so much for what you're doing and also inspiring others, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we now have our consent calendar, items 10 through 25. Board members, do you have any comments on the consent calendar?
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar, it's been seconded, we're ready to vote on the consent calendar. Now, the consent calendar has one more on the, one more vote on the consent calendar, and it's approved. We now, do we have any public comments? Six public comment speakers, all right. So we're going to have our public speakers, if you can make it four minutes this morning, please, all right? We'll start with Eric Berg, and then followed by Susan Mulligan. Good morning, Mr. Berg.
Thank you, Chairman Bennett, members of the board. My name is Eric Berg, I'm manager of resources with the Cigis Municipal Water District, I'm here along, today I'm here along with members of Cigis's board, and Susan Mulligan, Cigis' general manager, who will introduce themselves during their, for their four minutes. Today, we're here to address an issue that we consider to be among Cigis's highest priorities, if not its highest priority, and that is to support a true solution to the water resource issues in the Sacramento Delta, that, issues that have plagued that region for literally decades, generations. The Delta serves as a distribution point for imported water supply originating in the Northern Sierra, as you know, and is the supply for over 25 million residents in the state of California. Two-thirds of the state relies on that, 630,000 folks here in your county rely on that source, roughly 20,000 in Division One, roughly 180,000 in Division Two, 180,000, 150,000 in Division Four, another 180,000, roughly 150,000 in Division Five, and another 100,000 in Division Three. However, as each day passes, our Delta's ecosystem continues to crash, and along with it, our water supply reliability, our water supply reliability in the regions. But there's hope, in December of last year, the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, or BDCP, and associated environmental documents were released for public review, and that public review period is to conclude on July 29th. The documents were released with the full support of the Obama Administration and Governor Brown. This is Governor Brown's proposal, make no mistake about that, and it will not move forward without a buy-in by the federal and state Fish and Wildlife Agencies and other regulators, whether it's EPA, State Water Resources Control Board, NIMFs, there's a long list, that have to sign off on this, and have to issue permits before any earth is turned for any facilities. As such, we don't feel we need to be the gatekeepers of the Delta, there are many, many with a keen eye on this, in addition to the agencies I just mentioned, Bay Institute, NRDC, Sierra Club, many folks that have been monitoring activities of the Delta and will continue to do, to do that. The objectives of the BDCP are twofold, first is to restore the fragile ecosystem, and restore roughly 100,000 or 150,000 acres of habitat in that region, and provide protection measures for over 50 endangered, threatened, sensitive species. Two, to construct new conveyance facilities that would finally complete the state water project. State water project was never completed. When originally proposed in 1959 and passed in 1960, it included facilities within the Delta to provide more efficient conveyance of water through that system. That was never done, and as a result, the promise of the state water project has never been met fully. Bay Delta Conservation Plan facilities would provide for pumping from the north end of the Delta, where there are higher flows in the Sacramento River when supplies are abundant. The Delta would not be drained, as some opponents would like you to believe or claim. It's simply about preserving a historical average of deliveries, not one new drop of water, not one, it's about reliability, period. Cigis prepared draft coalition letter intended for Ventura County interests who wish to support the proposed BDCP. To date, entities that have agreed to join Cigis in signing the letter include the cities of Simi Valley, Camarillo, Oxnard, Port Juanimi. We'll be meeting with the Moore Park Chamber at their council meeting next Wednesday. Other organizations that have signed on include VCOG, the Six Chambers of Commerce with our service area, from Simi Valley to the Oxnard Plain. We also have VACITA, Ventura County Colab, the Association of Water Agents of Ventura County, and seven other water providers, including the United Water Conservation District, and all 22 agencies or entities in county. Governor Brown has asked for feedback from Southern California water interest on support efforts for the BDCP. He'll be empowered to continue the course if we stand united in this matter. If not, we'll have no one to blame but ourselves for any future water shortages or outages due to either the continuing erosion of the water supply, given regulatory restrictions that have been in place for a number of years now. Also, even worse yet, a catastrophic collapse of the Delta due to earthquake, et cetera, seismic activity that could lead to the loss of that invaluable supply for many years. In closing, Cigis would greatly appreciate agendaized consideration by your board regarding signing on to the letter with, again, you know, nearly two dozen other entities. Ventura County, as much as, if not more than, any other region in Southern California, is truly a poster child for imported state water reliability and the BDCP. That is an irrefutable fact, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your testimony, Susan Mulligan. Good morning, Ms. Mulligan.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, Supervisors, thanks for the opportunity to speak this morning. I'm Susan Mulligan, General Manager of Cigis Municipal Water District. I think of the Bay Delta Conservation Plan in terms of reliability and cost. I've been before your board talking about water rates, and this is an issue of water rates. This is the least-cost solution to resolve the reliability problem that we've had with the state project since 2007. Part of why we're in the situation that we are now is that since 2007, with the decisions about protecting Delta smelt and salmon, we've had to shut off our pumps and not bring water down, so since then, we've lost about 4 million anchor feet. By, that's 40 times, that's 40 years' worth of supply for Ventura County in terms of water supply, so this is a reliability problem for us. This offers the least-cost solution, three-quarters of our residents rely on imported water, and in that, and it's roughly everywhere except the agricultural area south of the Santa Clara River, and in those areas, three-quarters of the water they get is imported water, and in a typical year, all of that is from the state project. This year, with some careful changing round of supplies, we're able to get about 30% of our supply from Colorado River, but that's it. If the state project renders it dry, that's all we have, and it isn't enough even for indoor use, so we're very concerned about reliability on that project. So without the BDCP, we have two possible futures. One is, we keep having lower and lower reliability, we keep having situations like we're in now, and if there's an earthquake in the Delta, because the levees up there are getting higher and higher as farming continues up there and nothing gets done, a big earthquake takes them out, and the Delta becomes an inland sea, and we end up, the only solution is to build tunnels on an emergency basis. That takes six years without the permits, if we build it as fast as we can, and we are out of water. Simi Valley, Thousand Oaks, they get what we can get from the Colorado River. That's the concern, that's what I worry about. That's one future. Then the Cigis Board has a decision, if this doesn't happen, if these tunnels don't happen, do we want better reliability in our area, and what are we willing to pay for it? And the only other supply that has that much water is ocean desal. Stormwater capture, recycled water conservation, those are good, but the quantity that can be gained from that is so small compared with what our area needs, that it's a real concern. So ocean desal, water rates double, it uses about 50% more electricity than is required to bring water down from the state water project. It's not what we would want to do, the tunnels are a better solution for our area to have reliability. So we're coming to you here to ask and give you the opportunity to speak up, as 22 other agencies have done, and speak up for reliability and for cost-effective water supplies, and we just ask that you consider signing on to the coalition letter. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, our next speaker is Tom.
Can I ask Susan a question? Susan, you and I spoke out there a little bit, and some of the comments that I've received on some of this issue is that it doesn't add more storage, with the spend money doesn't add more storage. However, what you were saying is, because of, like now we have, our reservoirs are way down, during those times when the water was there, we would have been able to get more water, because we wouldn't affect the smelt, they would have been able to pump during the rainy times, and we would have been able to, in a sense, fill more of our reservoirs. So instead of not even adding more storage, but we would have been able to fill the storage that we have, correct?
That's correct. More storage is certainly helpful, but right now, that's not the problem we have, we have empty storage.
Right, we have empty storage, so during this time, people talk about, well, this doesn't add storage, but I think you made a good point when we were talking, is that because of this, we're pulling from the north portion of the Delta, we're not pulling, we're pulling cleaner water, and we're pulling water that would not affect smelt, that wouldn't have been shut off because of pumps, we could have done that, that all of that water was going to the ocean, we would have been able to get some of that water to keep our current storage higher.
That's exactly correct.
Correct, okay, great, thanks, I just wanted to make sure we're correct, thank you.
Our next speaker is Thomas Slosson.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, and members of the board supervisor. My name is Tom Slosson, I'm the representative for Cigis for the Simi Valley district area. I'm also a engineering geologist, in fact, I've worked on the La Conchita case as an expert for the county back in 95 and 2005. I'm here to talk about the BDCP and its need for it in Ventura County. We do need it for reliability, we do need it so that we have the water coming in and dependability on it. We need it for households, we need it for agriculture, we need it for businesses and manufacturing in Simi Valley and Ventura County. We have very limited sources here, we have groundwater, but that's being drawn down as we're finding out right now, and being depleted, although we are being able to figure out how to get water back in. The Cigis is working on the salinity management pipeline, which is going to allow some of that groundwater that is higher in salts to be used, and that is one way we're looking at getting local water, but we still need a dependable source. We need it for firefighting and other emergency uses and general public. If there was an emergency such as an earthquake here in Southern California, which we've had, we would be shut off locally for some of that, but we have ways to adjust for that, but if there is an earthquake that were to hit the Delta area, that would take out some of those levees. Now, those levees were built way back when, in the late 1860s, 50s, whatever, and the ground is settling, they're all peat, it's going to just go down, and you get a good earthquake, as Susan said, we're going to have an inland sea. Tunnels would not be affected by a levee break, or any of those problems. Let me read you a quick quote that came out of the Ventura County Star on July 5th of this year, the quote is, "As things stand now, a major earthquake in the San Francisco Bay region could damage levees in the Sacramento-San Joaquin River Delta, the source of much of the water used in Ventura County communities. A levee break would allow salt water to mix with freshwater that's sent to Southern California. Such damage to our freshwater supply would be a crippling blow to the local economy, costing billions of dollars and many jobs. The Bay Delta Plan includes a proposal for twin tunnels underground to carry water under the environmentally fragile Delta. The cost of the infrastructure would be paid for by the water agencies and their customers." Again, the tunnels would not be impacted by restrictions due to the flows in the Delta and the fish mandates, and it would be a much more reliable source. Currently, the reservoirs, as we were talking earlier, like Castake Reservoir, which is our main reservoir we use here, it's down like 50% currently, in fact, they had to shut off the boating and boat launches because it's below the ramp, or water level's below the ramp levels. So as was discussed, having these tunnels will allow those reservoirs to get filled back up and to be maintained at a proper level. There are other limited choices that we have, including ocean desal, and again, that would be very costly. A lot of the other things that have been discussed are like the rainwater capture, that works great in some areas, but as a geologist, there are some areas where between the expansive soils and the low infiltration, it wouldn't work. It's going to work in alluvial areas, but nothing with clay soils. We need it to occur for us in this area to have the BDCP plan, Bay Delta Conservation Plan, and asking for your support for that, if you would please, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Slosson. Andy Waters? All right, then Inez, you're not Andy Waters.
Good morning, not Andy Waters. I'm Andres Santa Maria, I represent the South Oxnard and Port Juanimi on the Cigis's board. My constituents are largely working-
Excuse me, sir, are you speaking on behalf of Andy Waters?
No, I'm Andres Santa Maria, the next person.
Oh.
Andy Waters couldn't make it this morning.
How'd you know you were next?
Sir, sir came to me.
Great.
And my constituents are largely working-class people who form the foundation of our society. They want a healthy economy, local jobs to support their families, and this requires reliable water. I also represent the military base, and also the Port of Juanimi, which both are major players here in the county, both require a lot of water. About half of the water used by the constituents is imported by the state water project from the Sierra Nevadas. The rest is groundwater, which relies heavily on imported water as a source of recharge in the form of recycled water. With recent cutbacks in groundwater allocations, even more of the water will need to be imported in the future. The Bay Delta Plan is a culmination of seven years of intense planning that produced over 40,000 pages of documentation, which basically studied this plan to make sure that it would work. The plan proposes to build twin tunnels underground to carry water under the environmentally fragile Delta. The cost of the infrastructure would be paid for by the agencies and their customers, which would amount to about $10 per month per household, and that is the estimate today. The Delta Plan is the most cost-effective project to achieve water reliability at the least cost. In order to best serve our constituents, I ask that you place consideration of signing the proposed letters on next week's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Inez Turrell?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here once again regarding the Long Library, which I said was the jewel of Ventura County, and which through apathy has been allowed to really disintegrate, and we do have something that is the best, and to let it become mediocre is really- And to let it become mediocre is really a mistake. We have been operating at a loss apparently since two thousand and eight. Everybody was aware of it, and nobody really did anything to try to raise funds or necessarily cut some of the benefits that are going to the employees. It's not that I'm against the employees. It's that if we're operating at a loss and the library pays four hundred and ten dollars a month per employee without any employee contribution for retirement and, I think it's retirement and medical, that's wrong. If the library isn't doing what it was supposed to do, what it was proposed to do, and it's giving benefits to employees, and I'm not against the benefits. I'm against not performing like you should. And I do believe with these benefits not being touched over this period of time, there was no incentive to raise money. It is my understanding they've never come to this Board of Supervisors to ask for help. The Board of Supervisors has two board members placed on the board. I don't know if you know of the problem. I don't know if you care about the problem. And I really mean that, because nothing has been done. They did start a 501(c) front-of-the-library project. All of the board members on that project are fully-employed attorneys. This whole thing has been involved with attorneys. And if they're fully-employed, I don't know that they'll have time to help. So, that's one of my problems. We need somebody either to do some fundraising, to do some grant writing. But the more we cut the employees, the less productive work we get out of the library. It seems to me if we could stay open and maybe if we're not so busy on Saturdays, some work could get done. Fundraising-type work. Thank you. And I don't mean to be angry. I'm just very sad about this. Thanks.
We appreciate your testimony, and that's what the public comment period is for, is to do that. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Wolfle. Good morning, Ms. Wolfle.
Good morning. Thank you, County Board of Supervisors. My name's Elizabeth Wolfle. I'm a program coordinator with the Oxnard Downtown Management District. And we're here today to speak about food trucks. We put on a monthly event called the Gourmet Food Truck Events, the first Thursdays of every month in downtown Oxnard. And recent policy changes through here at the county have limited the way that we conduct our events. Normally, we're able to bring in food trucks from all over California and invite them into our county on a one-day use permit, which is kind of a special thing to be able to do, to come in. We have a waiting list. It's about, filled about two, three months ahead of time for our events. And it's a wonderful experience to be able to come out for an evening and experience something a little bit different. Our program, our food truck event, is very unique in that we do have restaurants in our downtown, and we do have a lot of other activities. But this is something that brings families together, brings a whole cultural together of foodies, of people who like to eat, like myself, who like to have something that we may not have every day that I won't, you know, I don't have time to go out of town to get or, you know, go to Santa Barbara or San Diego for. And we've really, we've really been doing well with this event in being able to invite our out-of-town guests and also some local ones and do a really, a really fun mix. We have about two thousand people in attendance for every one of our monthly events. And we've been able to partner with a lot of great organizations, like the Girl Scouts, like we're doing one with Ventura County Animal Services and licensing and things like that for this next month that's coming up. But it's, it's just a really great event. And with the new regulation that I know about a year ago, there was a trial run that was put in place for our temporary food permits, our TFFs. And with that going away, we're really seeing a severe drop in what we can choose to have at our events and who can participate. And we're always looking at ways to be business-friendly, ways to be different here in this area. And this is just one of those events. I spend most of my time educating a lot of my friends and family about food truck regulations because it's very different than food trucks that are annually permitted, that are allowed to just be on the street. Our event is an event organized through the county. We have to take out a special permit with the county. We have to take out special permits with the city, and we have to pay fees along the way for each one of those things. And we have an inspector that comes on site. We have, it just, so many things like that that are very different than some of these other trucks. So, I hope that you consider bringing back this issue and finding a way to help our event continue. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Wolfle. Our final speaker is Abel Magana. Maganya, thank you. Pardon me, Mr. Magana.
That's quite all right. Good morning, Chairman Bennett, esteemed supervisors. My name is Abel Maganya. I am the executive director for the Oxnard Downtown Management District. It's an association of property and business owners within our downtown. And if you're familiar with our downtown, it's been a redevelopment project for quite some time. We've come a long way. At one time, it was considered a neglected, blighted kind of an area, had high crime, and people didn't want to come there. It's not that at all now. I mean, if you've been down there now, it's a beautiful area with a state-of-the-art theater complex, entertainment centers, beautiful Plaza Park there where people gather for events, the event that my associate Elizabeth Wolfle just mentioned, the food trucks. And those events are very, very important, we found, as an association, because one of the, the work that we do, it includes things like keeping the downtown clean, safe. We have district safety officers and, you know, basic stuff that you need in a downtown to make it comfortable for visitors in, to the area. But the one thing that we, you know, even with all that, you really have to have to bring people is to have something fun. And so, we do this gourmet food truck event since two thousand and eleven. It was an inspired marketing idea that we had to leverage a trend that was emerging out in Southern California. And we were the first in the eight oh five in this area code to bring this gourmet food trucks into the area. So, it was something new, and we appreciated very much the environmental health departments working with us to make it happen here because it was bringing in vendors from other areas who have different, maybe some different, slightly different standards in terms of food safety, how they grade their trucks. But we've done since then about thirty events, and they've had not one incident of, you know, food poisoning or anything like that. I mean, they're just, the standards are here. Every truck goes through a plan check when they arrive the day of the event. So, we feel like the health department's maintaining and doing their job. So, we're a little confused as to why they're changing the rules now and saying those trucks have to come in now with annual permits. Annual permits are a big investment for a truck. It's about a twelve-hundred dollar investment versus a sixty-eight-dollar one-day permit, one-day pass. And what we're really talking about is also equity. Equity in that there are still temporary food facilities that are allowed to come in, vendors for other events. There are the guys that do the pop-ups and put out their little hand-washing station and all that kind of stuff, and they get to sell here at events. So, why are we penalizing guys just because they're on wheels, on four wheels? And it just doesn't make sense, much like an earlier restriction that was in place that was on the records when, that limited food trucks to just four appearances. If they were out of the county, they could only appear four times within our county on a one-day permit. That also sort of doesn't make sense. I mean, it's more revenue if these guys are coming in. Every time they come, they pay their fees. They go through the plan check, so. And then we've actually had a number of trucks from out of the area go on, once they've tested the market, go on and get their annual permits. So, it seems to me a good business practice, too, to encourage new business startups, which means new jobs out here, too. So, we'd like you to revisit this issue. And I have a letter that we would like entered into the record. It explains it in a little bit more detail. But thank you very much, and we appreciate the goals of the County Health Department. We, both Elizabeth and I, have attended the food safety class, and I tell you, we do appreciate, you know, when we go into the kitchen and all the standards are set. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony, Supervisors.
Mr. Chair, I just want to commend Abel and Elizabeth for doing an excellent job over in downtown Oxnard. You know, they've come out with many, many positive events. Their downtown Oxnard has really helped the community tremendously. I think the trucks that you're talking about are the gourmet trucks, not the taco trucks that park in a service station or out in some unknown place, but more of a gourmet-type trucks that park around Plaza Park. And I think they're also in Ventura and other cities, but that's what you're talking about, not the-
That's correct, Supervisor Zaracosa. It is, it's the gourmet variety, which I appreciate you bringing that to note because the taco trucks that we are all accustomed to, they're set up just anywhere in the evenings. Those are completely unregulated. We see that, too. It's an enforcement issue.
Yeah, but I just want to commend you for the good work you're doing for the P-Bed or the downtown program they have there in Oxnard.
Thank you very much for your support.
Okay, thank you. We're ready for our board comments. Supervisor Zaracosa.
Yeah, thank you. Now, as you know, we were out for a couple of weeks, and I'd just like to share, I have quite a few items here that, quickly, that I'll share. We had the ribbon-cutting for the boat-launching ramp over at the harbor. You know, we went year after year, and it cost us quite a few million dollars to do so. That's a safety issue that we had there, but we had ribbon-cutting, and that's really a major plus for the harbor. Additionally, I attended the Oxnard Chamber of Commerce Business Awards, you know, for the Oxnard Chamber. It was well-attended, a couple of hundred people. Also, we had the June 30th Boys and Girls Club Greater Oxnard Port Weneme, Tim Blaylock farewell. You know, Tim was with the Boys and Girls Club for twelve years, and we gave him accommodation on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. And additionally, Arsenio Lopez got promoted. Arsenio Lopez is one of the board members for the Star. You know, he's now an officer, executive officer for MYCOB, the Mestico Community. And he's very proud. He speaks four languages, and he was just made the executive officer for MYCOB. Additionally, on the Fourth of July, I hope everybody had a great weekend for the Fourth of July. In addition, during that week, I attended the tour of the naval base in Ventura County, where we have the facility for the undocumented children that are stationed there. And one of the things that we found out that did the tour, let me back up a little bit. There was quite a few elected officials, senators from the state of California, assembly persons, the also other individuals that were there representing numerous agencies. When I attended there, it was five hundred and seventy-five immigrants. And my understanding that those kids are between thirteen and seventeen years of age. They're there for about two weeks, and then they're shipped out to different locations where they have family members and so forth. And primarily, they're from Guatemala, El Salvador, and Honduras. And they process about one hundred-plus children per day, and eighty-five percent of those children are placed with relatives within the U.S. And the other fifty percent, you know, are transferred to other facilities, waiting to see what they're going to do with those children. Additionally, we have about twenty to twenty-five volunteer physicians that go out there and help those children. And of course, they're being contracted out with the Southwest key contractors that the government has contracted with. And our Ventura, I'm very proud of, Mr. Chair, of our agencies, Ventura County agencies. The West Ventura Medical Clinic is helping out. The Las Islas over in South Oxnard is helping out the kids. Magnolia Urgent Care on Gonzalez Road is helping out. And the VCMC is also taking care of some of the children that might get ill. And also from the senators and assembly persons that were there and other electeds, I have very high praise for the County of Ventura and the participation that they're doing. They see it more as humanitarian as I do, effort in helping out those children. Of course, there's a lot of controversy to it, but I just want to share that we're doing our part. And Michael, I want to thank our staff, you know, and our, you know, I know that Barry has worked and Melanie and, and I shouldn't mention any names, but quite a few individuals, Dr. La, you know, LaVine and so forth. But it was a good tour, and they're doing an excellent job. I think Captain Voskis, if you go through the whole process, it's nice and clean, their process, their educational, they've got medical, everything that they need. But they're there for about two weeks, and they're processed out. Just an excellent, excellent job that they're doing. Additionally, I had the opportunity to go to Ed Hunt Annual Picnic over at Oxnard Shores. Ed Hunt was very instrumental in actually coming out with access to the beach for the physically-challenged individuals. And there was maybe a couple, two, three hundred people there that now have the opportunity to go with their wheelchairs out to the beach and enjoy the water and so forth. Great celebration, too. Additionally, I supported the Oxnard firefighters. They had a beach cleaned up over Oxnard Shores. They have quite a few people and children, families, cleaning the beach, you know, for us. And of course, we had numerous other things, and I'll be here all morning to continue that, but that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Foy.
Oh, by the way, and this is my, I want to adjourn the memory of those folks on this list.
And I also want to adjourn the memory of people on this list, and I appreciate you bringing up the stuff with the kids at the base that is a, you know, there's a, I think we have to get it understood, there's a policy issue that we can agree and not agree, but we still have young kids who don't have their parents there that we need to make sure people are caring for. So, I think it's an interesting-
And our county's doing an excellent job.
Yeah, I think so. That's all that's done. That's it. I wish, I hope everybody had a great Fourth of July.
Supervisor Parks.
A few things have happened over the last couple of weeks that we've been dark, and one thing I wanted to do is compliment our Sheriff's Department. I was at Von's in Oak Park, or in the Oak Brook Shopping Center in Thousand Oaks, and there was a bank robbery in there, and I didn't even know that it occurred, but ran into our chief there, and he came up and told me that there was one and that I was probably there when it occurred. And I thought, well, I'd wait before I mentioned that because I know they'd get their guys. And sure enough, they did. And I just, I really marvel at how fortunate we are. So many times, we see our Sheriff's Department catch their guys that you would never expect that would occur in like L.A. And I think a lot of that has to do with the size that we are and that we are able to have some of the best that you can get as our deputies. Kudos to them and Chief Hagel out there in Thousand Oaks. I also want to hand out to the Board of Supervisors an article that you may not have seen in the Daily News, and I'll get a copy to Supervisor Long, too. But this is an article that talks about how, at an increasing pace, our local governments are spending our tax dollars paying lobbyists in Sacramento to lobby our legislators. And as a matter of fact, it says, "A review of state records show that government-on-government lobbying is the single largest segment of lobbying of the California State Legislature." And you just think, you know, something's wrong with government when we have to, we can't just pick up the phone and call our legislator. But we're spending, I think, forty-five million dollars annually, governments in California just to lobby our one hundred and twenty elected state representatives. I just wanted to bring that up as an interesting note of what I consider some dysfunctional government. On the lighter side of things, we on Wednesday, tomorrow, are going to have a channel walk along the flood-control channel in Newberry Park. This is from a grant that the county received- This is from a grant that the county received, doing a study to see if we can use the maintenance road that runs along the channels for bicycling, pedestrians, and even disabled joggers, anyone could use it. And we're looking now, what are the impediments for opening that up? And I'm hoping that we'll have a good turnout there. The channel walk starts at the Borchard Road entrance of Borchard Park tomorrow, Wednesday, July 16. And I think the community will have an opportunity to see an area that is right there in their backyards, essentially, but that they are never able to actually walk on. And it's a beautiful area, it's a soft-bottom creek, and a lot of vegetation and aquatic animals, actually, there, too. I've actually heard yesterday someone was able to fish there, catch and release. It's surprising what you can find in our creeks. Additionally, I was able to attend the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Kyle Hayes of Troop 754 in Newberry Park. Always nice to be able to attend those Eagle Scouts and hear what those young men have done for their community, and then also to see where they go from here. And finally, I was also able to attend the La Fiesta del Triunfo, where we honored the Don and Donia for the Historic Society out there in Thousand Oaks. Don Albert Bud Marley was the Don, and Pat Palucci was the Donia. Bud Marley indicated one of his major accomplishments was keeping Bob Phrase in our area, and he was superintendent of the Canoe Valley Unified School District. And Donia Pat Palucci has just been an amazing volunteer, both with her time and her money for great efforts. So, it's nice to attend. And then I know that a few of us also attended the Viewport Grand Opening outside of the Camarillo Airport, which was really nice to see. It's really engaging for kids. You can be at the restaurant, that café there, the Airport Café, is just booming. I really look forward to going there. It has changed significantly. The owners that started up, Baja Fresh, are now the owners of that café, and it just is doing wonderfully. And the viewport right outside of that area is just a great friendly place to be able to go to with your kids, and they have a little tower that you can hear the planes coming in and going out. So, it's just a great place, grass and an area to play on. I know you were there, too.
No, Supervisor, I just want to add to what you said, because it belongs to the Airport Authority, and Todd gave us a presentation that was going to be COG. And that little tower, apparently, you can sit there, and they can hear the control tower and the planes coming in, and it's really outstanding, especially for the children and kids like myself, too, they can hear that.
And all the different organizations that help support the airport all contributed some funds to it.
Excellent exhibition for...
And just makes it a nice place to go, even if you have nothing to do with the airport. It's just a great place to be. Kudos to the airports and Todd McNeely. I also ask that we close and honor the people on this list.
Thank you very much. Just on a personal note, I'll pass on that Bud Marley was the superintendent that hired me when I came here to teach at Ojai Unified School.
He didn't mention that, but he did mention Bob Phrase.
Yeah, he didn't mention that, right. He mentioned Bob Phrase, sure, right. The other thing is, I appreciate this that you passed out. Were you saying that the lobbying by the public agencies is more than all the private lobbying, or it's growing faster?
No, both. It says right there, it indicates that the most money going out there is being paid for by our, more so than all the other entities.
Well, I see this where it says, and all local government spent about $45 million, and so all the other entities spend less than $45 million lobbying?
It says it's the single largest segment of lobbying of the California State Legislature that's coming from our tax dollars, going to our paid tax dollar legislators.
All right. Well, thank you for sharing that. I appreciate that. The only thing I have is, I hope everybody did have a good break for the Fourth. I was able to attend the documentary film put together called Eyes on the Sky. It talks about water policy in the western United States and the whole issue of the over-pumping of the Awkola Aquifer, and how similar some of the issues that they brought up there relate to our situation here with Fox Canyon and groundwater here. But it's a great documentary, if you get a chance to see it. It's called Eyes on the Sky, and he's done, for just a local guy doing it with his own money, I was really impressed with what he came up with in terms of that. And I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and I'm sorry to have to call out one person in particular, Melanie McLannan-Klayman. She was the chief assistant county council for the County of Ventura. She managed over 19 attorneys with heavy caseloads. She was an award-winning photographer, avid supporter of the arts, served as a board member for the Rubicon Theater. And so, the family, family will be losing her. And then Bob Gips, who was very active in Amnesty International here in Ventura County, one of the leaders of that. And we lost both of those, plus quite a few other people over the two-week break on this list that ask us to adjourn in memory of. Thank you very much.
Can I also just comment on, Kaye gives me this a water district. Appreciate that you came this morning and definitely heard your requests, and I appreciate your efforts to see what you can do during these drought times, too. It is really important, and I'm glad your eyes are on that. Thank you.
All right, we're now ready to move to our regular agenda. We have, our first time certain starts at 10:00, so we're going to try to get as much of our regular agenda done as we can. And the first item is item 35, and that's the Ventura County Library. 36, thank you very much. All right. There we go.
I'm new at this. Dale Redfield, Principal Librarian, Ventura County Library. And we just want to say we appreciate the Board of Supervisor's support on this resolution and the community of the Ojai Valley in doing this 18 years ago in perpetuity, apparently. So, thank you.
Classic example of Ojai, again, citizens there stepping up, voting themselves to have, to tax themselves because they want a service, did the same thing with the Oakview School. So, alls we have to do is the formality of reinstituting this special tax assessment every year that the citizens voted for. So, I'd like to move the recommended action. It's been moved and seconded, we're ready to vote. And that passes. Thanks for taking the time to come down. One more vote? There we go. Then that passes. Item 37, Auditor Controller.
Good morning, Chair Bennett. Supervisors, Mr. Powers, the record Jeff Berg, Assistant, our Controller for the County of Ventura. The item for you today is just a ratification of Amendment Number Two to our contract with CGI. They are the contractor who is assisting us with the upgrade of our financial system. The amendment represents an approximate savings to the county of about $10,000. We're going to be purchasing our Oracle database licenses through CGI rather than ITSD. This was a savings, I must admit that ITSD found that we could save money by buying our licenses through CGI, then through ITSD. So, that's a great thing that they identified that savings and brought it to, I know it's only $10,000. That's why the second recommendation is to prove that all future amendments, the county purchasing agent can just approve them, so that we don't have to come to your board and write the board letter and go through sire and all that. So, basically, that's it. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, and thank you.
I do have a question. Is it anticipated? Now, we're at about $11 million, and we are looking at getting authority to go up to $15 million. Is it anticipated that we will get to $15 million?
I'm reading the board letter. Our contract with CGI is for that amount, but we have other costs associated, our internal costs, the total cost would be $15 million. I don't know if we're going to be able to reduce that to 11, but we, as we identify savings, we could have some savings in the overall $15 million project costs.
Because that's what the contract's for, so that's what is anticipated then?
Right. Yeah, the other, up to $15 million is just internal cost for our staff, ITSD staff, and what have you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We're ready for a motion. It's been moved and seconded, we're ready to vote.
Thank you.
And that passes. We're at item 38. Supervisor is...
Why don't you just stand there?
Should I stand here?
Supervisor Zaragosa, Supervisor Zaragosa, myself, making the proposal to take Mr. Bergen, moving from acting to the actual auditor, and allow him to go ahead and get going on hiring an assistant and speaking with him and talking with county council. We researched this to find out what the impacts would be in terms of doing this.
Yes, and then, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to add that Jeff's done an outstanding job in his interim, you know, for the last year, you know, outstanding education. We looked up your resume, too, and the whole thing. He's worked, worked for the CEO's office, and in the election, he had 98%. My goodness, how do you do that?
I forgot who that 2% was, but...
He's also, you know, Jeff has worked...
Tough campaign.
Had a hard time, right? And also, of course, you know, he's a leading commissioner, winding down the redevelopment agency for Oxnard, and done many outstanding work for, worked for the CEO's office and probation, and I just want to commend you and recommend that we do approve this item.
It's like we have a nice group here for some reason, too, right?
Is that the whole team?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know, maybe we should question this.
I've got another hard one for me.
Yes, yes, yes.
I just want to say, in addition to your background, your experience, we have noted the difference, too, and appreciate so much the work that you do in that office. You have got the trust and through your honesty and forthrightness, we really appreciate the work that you do.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I think Jeff brings a lot of business sense and a lot of cooperation, can-do attitude to the department, I think, which is good for everybody else, so I guess we'll go along with this. You're probably taking a pay cut to do this, but, you know.
And the important thing is, Mr. Chair, as you know, he's well-respected throughout Ventura County and also from staff and other agencies, so.
Mr. Powers.
I was just going to echo, just been a great partner to work with, and now that your elected official is sucking up, we'll begin, I'll start. But, always been a great, great partner to work with. Really appreciate it, your whole office, thank you.
Yeah, all the credit to the staff.
And also that you work with all the other government agencies, too.
That's exactly...
It's just really great that you have that trust.
We have to leave for Moore Park early today, because we have an oversight board. Maybe not Moore Park, I'm on their committee as well, so.
You've done a good job, and they really enjoy working with you, so I think that's great, so appreciate it. It's good.
We haven't voted yet, but you...
I know, that's what I was going to say. Hold your applause.
You do have the mantle of leadership, so go forth and do a great job of being a leader that you have so far for this point in time. And so, with that, I'm happy to make the motion, and it's been seconded, and we're ready to vote.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I do appreciate that.
All righty, item 39, Supervisor Zaragosa.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 39 is, I'd like to direct the Harbor Department to prepare a report on the 1963 agreement between the County of Ventura and the City of Oxnard. As you know, in '63, the County of Ventura and City of Oxnard entered into a 50-year agreement on the responsibilities of the Channel Islands Harbor. Recently, a one-year extension was agreed upon by both agencies. However, that's going to run out here in November, and we would like to have an agreement with the City of Oxnard. However, in order to study this review, the City of Oxnard went and set up an ad hoc committee made out of the mayor and a council member, and they've been meeting over at the Seabridge Neighborhood Council by the harbor. But unfortunately, what's happened, there's been a lot of miscommunications and a lot of misunderstandings statements shared with the community at those meetings. So, today, what I'd like to do is recommend that our Harbor Department staff prepare a report for the Board of Supervisors to review at a future date, probably maybe after a recess, you know, later in the year, on the process of negotiating with the City of Oxnard and to bring forward, hopefully, a new contract with the city. I would also like to direct Harbor staff to continue to negotiate with the senior staff of the City of Oxnard to come up with a resolution on this 50-year agreement. Also, in the same report, I would request that the Harbor staff provide additional information to clarify some of the misunderstandings that have been arisen at this public hearings over at Seabridge. And finally, I'd like to ask the Harbor staff to come up with some options into how we can involve the public to be more involved in some of the projects that are being proposed over at the harbor. And that's basically what I have at this time. Mr. Mayor, I know that they're having meetings there, but the misunderstandings and misinformation, I think it's important that we clarify that through a report by our staff from the harbor, Lynn, you know. So, that's my request at this time.
If I may, I'd like to add, it is a kind of unusual situation that we have out there in the harbor, and that we own land and it's in the city. You know, it's not in the unincorporated county, and there are these agreements that talk about how, you know, basically, sales tax dollars don't come to the county, it goes to the city, and we're the ones that are doing the leases out there. I have always been concerned whether the revenue that we're receiving is to a benefit to the county from the work that we do out there. And I was just wondering, since you're going to ask for this review, if we could also take a look at cost versus revenue as a result of the contract?
That's right.
I know it's a lot bigger one than just trying to correct misinformation out there and looking for perhaps a more direct government representation, but what I'm looking for specifically is whether the revenue that the county receives as a result of this contract is to our benefit, or if, you know, it isn't. It's just looking at the costs for services, like to patrol, versus the amount of money that we have, that we're getting there, because we may want to have a larger look at this.
I think one of the biggest concerns that we have there is the commingling of the responsibilities. We have the harbor, and then we have Seabridge. Seabridge has a CFD, they have assessment costs, and they're talking about the Harbor Patrol, and they're commingling the two items, and I think that's the clarification that we need to share, because the Seabridge folks are concerned about the cost, that the CFD...
Right. And I agree, what I'm looking at is a bigger scale than looking at the specific issue of Seabridge and their services that they get as a result of their development agreements.
And one of, I think, one of the concerns that I have is that the public understand that we have public input, and that's what Seabridge residents want, and also some of the harbor residents and businesses, just a clarity. And it's clear, once you look at the agreement, for example, the 1963 agreement talks about who's going to take care of the trash over, who's going to, the fire station, talks about some other issues, and they're commingling that with the CFD and the cost at Seabridge, and that needs to be clarified, you know. And also the cost of the Harbor Patrol, Highway Patrol, the Harbor Patrol.
Leroy, is there a standard-type thing that goes on with this kind of, when you have a city right next to a county piece, or...
Yeah, I'm not sure it's that normal that there's a standard for it, but I think it's fairly straightforward, you know, that it's, the county owns the property, but it's in the city of Oxnard, and I think there's a lot, there are a lot of examples where counties own property that are in cities. And this was just an agreement, as I understand it, when the annexation to the city occurred, then the city would get the tax revenue, because, but in exchange, the city would provide basic municipal services, like street cleaning and lighting and that sort of thing. So, I don't think it's that unusual of an agreement.
But Lynn can probably give us more, you know, maybe just a quick, because all we're asking is for a report, but...
If I could, if I could just clarify a couple of things before we proceed. Number one, Supervisor Parks is asking about adding a financial analysis, and I just want to... one, Supervisor Parks is asking about adding a financial analysis, and I just want to, and I want to know what you want to do with that request.
Well, I think more than anything else is just to find out who's responsible for the harbor and who's responsible for Seabridge. The analysis, you know, I think it's important that we understand it more than to co-mingle...
So do you want to add her request as part of your motion, or you don't want to add her request?
Well, I don't think so at this time. I just want to come out with a report from Lynn.
And then the other thing, if I could, the letter that you have here says, "Direct the harbor department to prepare a report regarding the nineteen sixty-three agreement between the County of Ventura and the City of Oxnard," and I certainly support that. You added a number of other things there, you know, in getting us ready for the next agreement with, and I thought we were going to stay neutral on those things. I mean, she can talk about those things, but it's not taking a position one way or the other.
No, no, I just want to look at that agreement and see what, you know, we, can we continue with the fifty-year agreement that we had before?
All right. Ms. Krieger, you want to clarify?
That's all right. I can leave it go for now. Well, I'm sure we'll be having additional discussion as we prepare the report. I was just going to comment that there's so many different ways to organize, and perhaps one of the things in talking about the nineteen sixty-three agreement is how this compares to how other areas are organized and how the cash flows, which might get at the issue Supervisor Parks is interested in without doing, if you don't choose to do the full-blown analysis.
And that was my question. I was asking, Leroy, is there a standard of how they normally do this kind of thing? Because we have the beach, right?
Right.
But then the houses that are, are they tax revenue to the city, because they're in the city, and then we don't get, or we take care...
There's some of both.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, okay.
I think, too, that we're basically the landlords within the city. We have property within the City of Oxnard, and we're the landlords there. If you, if that, simplify that, Seabridge is regulated by the City of Oxnard more than being part of the county. Is that correct? Can you clarify that?
Well, yes, I guess I'd say the simple difference is, in the harbor, the county is acting in its proprietary capacity as a property owner, and the city up in Seabridge is acting in its regulatory capacity where the, there are private property owners and they just have planning and code enforcement and so forth. It's a very different role.
So I think probably in the future, their report might clarify a lot of those issues. Thank you.
I would just say that getting a report back without having an understanding of what the costs are is kind of, then, your recommendation is going with your gut feelings on things, but it would be nice to have some connection with it if we're talking about trash pickup or we're talking about patrol services. I mean, we should have an idea of what we're talking about when we're making recommendations. That's my only thought.
Mr. Auditor Controller now. Is there, you're working on some ideas, trying to understand revenues and stuff?
Yeah, Sandy Bigford, charge of special funding, is looking into that right now, trying to split out the property tax where it's coming from, identify how it's getting funded. So, yeah, we can help, we can assist with the CEO in finding out where that revenue's coming from and work with harbor.
Could I suggest that maybe another way to do that, which is us ask a question in a different way, but have Ms. Krieger and her report focused on the things Supervisor Zaragosa's asking for and then ask him to do his piece.
That's part of the process, okay.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. We're ready to vote on the motion and the letter here in front of us.
That goes, Mike, will you ask that situation? We can get from the Auditor Controller, that revenue based on this kind of thing?
Yeah, we'll go then to add that to the report.
Okay, great. All right.
All right. Great. We're at item, we have ten minutes. We have item forty. CEO's office.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, members of the board. Mr. Powers, for the record, Michelle Yamaguchi with the County Executive Office. The item before you is the approval of the responses to the grand jury report titled Temporary Food Facilities in Ventura County. Our office worked in conjunction with environmental health to craft a response on your board's behalf. I'm available to answer questions, and I also have Bill Stratton to answer any questions, should you have any.
Have any questions for staff? We're ready for, excuse me, we're ready for a motion. I got water, but the water seems to keep making it worse.
I think your responses were good.
Item forty-one, CEO's office, Peace Officers Association.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, members of the board, CEO Powers. For the record, I'm Tobin Co-CEO, County Labor Relations. I have the monumental task of standing in for Jim Dembowski, who led this negotiations and secured this agreement that is being proposed to your board this morning. Unfortunately, he had a scheduling conflict that prevented him from presenting this agenda item to your board today. The recommendation is for your board to commence public hearing on the adoption of an agreement between the patrol unit. That is for officers employed at the airports, GSA parks in the harbor, and who are represented by the Ventura County Professional Peace Officers Association. The previous MOA expired on June thirtieth, or June twenty-third, 2013. This tentative agreement comes before you after almost twenty formal bargaining sessions, numerous informal, but yet substantive bargaining sessions, and a year and a half of negotiations. The last increase for this patrol unit was in 2009. The efforts of the parties has produced a three-year agreement that produces, provides for prudent increases over the term of the MOA, and also with an agreement to, into, into a fifty-fifty cost sharing on the retirement costs for the employees. I'll highlight some of the substantive changes in the agreement. First off, there's a one-time payment of $750 for full-time employees or $600 for part-time employees represented by the patrol unit. There is a one percent general salary increase with a potential one percent market-based adjustment. That would be effective March 29th, 2015. And a second set of increases of a three percent general salary increase, that would be in March 27th, 2016. The flex credit will be increased by $12 twice in this year to take the total up to $297 by the end of this calendar year. And also, in September, the patrol unit will move to a fifty-fifty cost-sharing arrangement on the retirement cost for the retirement plan. Veterans Day will be observed, pending agreement with the remaining bargaining representatives, starting in 2014. Uniform allowance was increased to a $3 to $100 annual allowance. And then there is also cost control measures for overtime, where contractual overtime will be discounted to enhance our cost of, control of overtime cost. We were notified on June 25th that the probation patrol unit has ratified this agreement. This agreement will come to your board on July 22nd with a recommendation for your board to hold a second hearing at the conclusion of the hearing to adopt the terms of the agreement. And again, that will be on July 22nd. Mr. Dembowski would like to thank the labor team, specifically Mike Conroe and Yvonne Martinez, who assisted with the ongoing negotiations. Also, County Counsel Leroy Smith and Matt Smith for their sagacious advice during these negotiations, and of course, GSA, harbor, and airports administration for their support. And of course, CEO Mike Powers, your board, Assistant CEOs, Paul Jersey, Catherine Rodriguez, and Matt Carroll for their continued support during these negotiations. And with that, I'll make myself available to answer any questions that you may have.
We have any questions for staff? We're ready for a motion? It's been moved and seconded.
I just appreciate being able to move these employees up to more of the market average.
Thank you, Tobin.
Thank you.
We're at, hopefully, we can get to these other items. Item forty-two, Public Works has been continued. Item forty-three, thank you. This is a recommendation on county council to start county council. We started him last, at our last meeting for a four-year, another four-year term, and this is a recommendation, do a salary increase for county council based on superior job performance that, in terms of the evaluation that we gave him. So I'd move that recommended action.
It's a pleasure to be able to do this, too. Just my compliments to our county council. We're fortunate to have you.
Mr. Chair, also, thank you, Leroy, for excellent work that you do for us.
Thank you.
And it's, that's been approved, and recommendation Supervisor Parks.
Yes, this is a request that we appoint Barbara Kircoff, who has been the alternate member of the SOMAS Municipal Advisory Council, make her a full member, and then also appoint Tyler Cobb to the SOMAS Municipal Advisory Council. Tyler will be taking the place of David Borchard, who's been kept busy with the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency and too busy to be able to do all of the work, including the SOMAS MAC. But Tyler also represents the agricultural community, so I'm delighted that he is interested, and that's my motion.
All right. And a motion and a second. We're ready to vote. And we could use a motion on the correspondence agendas, items. Motion to receive and file the correspondence agenda. That's been approved, and we will take a break for four minutes and come back at ten o'clock for our ten o'clock time cert. Okay, we have, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Are we ready there, Brian? And we have three ten o'clock time certain items. The fair poster, the recognition of probation services week in Ventura County, and the recognition of the search and rescue effort that we had for the missing off-duty city of Arcadia firefighter. And we're going to do item twenty-eight first with that recognition. That's a request of the sheriff. We have some people that are out, they're trying to get back, and we have quite a few of them here, and we'd like to get these gentlemen honored properly. So, item twenty-eight. Really happy to have the sheriff here, and it was a sad moment for us in Ventura County. We had hundreds of volunteers that came together in trying to find the missing firefighter, and we didn't have all of them come today, but we tried to have the leaders of all the various teams show up today. And I'm going to turn this over to the sheriff, but I just want to all of the, all the team members or their leaders of all the teams that are here today to let them know how much the Board of Supervisors really appreciated. And certainly, it was a model effort here in Ventura County of agencies and volunteers coming together to try to do a very difficult and dangerous search there. Sheriff Dean?
Supervisor Bennett, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Jeff Dean, Sheriff, thank you so much for putting this on your agenda to recognize these unbelievable people that volunteer their time or people that work for us, that are county employees, that go above and beyond, and their technical expertise exceeds those of everyone else, and we're so instrumental in this. You see the, kind of a sampling of the group in the back, and it's mounted people who spent, went twenty-six miles on horseback through some of the roughest country you'll ever want to see. At one point, a horse fell down a cliff, and they had to go down, it got trapped underneath, rider got hurt, they had to go down the cliff, bring the rider back up. You know, we had the rescuer bit by the rattlesnake who spent two weeks in the hospital. But to me, the epitome is the comment of one of the rescuers, I don't know if I shared with you when I gave you the update before, when the news media was out there and he said, "I can't have my picture taken." Well, why? Well, I called my boss and I told him I was sick today. And that's what these people do. They sacrifice their personal lives, they sacrifice their time, they take financial sacrifices. I can tell each one of those SAR members is carrying thousands of dollars of gear. We didn't pay for any of that. They buy all that gear themselves. And they risk their lives to help their community, and we would be lost. Aside from the financial contribution, people would die without them. I was talking to Bill Slaughter, the captain of the Ojai team, and they've been out twice since then. On motorcycle rider, unfortunately, didn't survive, and then several other lost hikers. So the teams go out all the time, they're incredibly dedicated. And I guess, let me, if I could call up just the captains of the team and have them come up from, as I mentioned, from the upper Ojai search and rescue team, Captain Bill Slaughter. We allow him to be part of the team, even though he is an attorney. And I don't, from Fillmore, is Rick Neal here? Somebody from Fillmore here? City council member, he must be. And that's the kind of people we have. He's the captain of our search and rescue team, he's on the Fillmore City Council, and he's on the Fillmore Volunteer Fire Department. Matt Humphries from the East Valley team? Dr. Jerry Marinick from the medical search and rescue team. So here you have a doctor volunteering his time to come out, sit, and he's out at the air unit and able to fly and help rescue people. Ann Anderson from the K-9 search and rescue team? And then Sergeant Roger DeWamms, one of our sergeants who coordinates all of our mounted unit. Roger, I haven't seen him without a cowboy hat in a long time. And then, kind of, we have one person assigned to coordinate these hundreds and hundreds of volunteers, and he's out at our air unit. And Sergeant Carl Patterson, and he was kind of the leader of the whole search process the whole time. And then, as you might have read in the paper, this is the first time that we use UAVs. We used our little drone and our little helicopter and AeroEnvironment, who unfortunately, their pilots are out of town and couldn't be here, but brought out what they call the Predator, but it's an airplane-type model that was actually very instrumental in being able to search ground that the helicopters and the rescuers couldn't get here. But Chris Dunn from the sheriff's office, Senior Deputy Darren Smith and Dennis Leva, Deputy Ryan Lindsay and Dan Seibert, they're kind of our team that have taken this project. We're probably one of the leaders in the country in doing this, and FAA approval, following the rules, and keeping your board posted. We don't, you know, we're not going to violate anybody's privacy, but we are going to use it to save lives. So with that, again, thank you very much. I told Bill Slaughter, I go, "I feel bad calling people in to recognize them, because it means they're taking time away from their jobs again to do here." And just another day, another commitment to be here, but I appreciate the board taking the time to recognize these people for what they do.
Mr. Chair, you know, Sheriff, you know, I'd like to thank the rescue mission, you know, the rescue outfit units, you know, and all the good work you've done. You never gave up, you know. In fact, I was watching you on TV and watching all the rescue units that were out there, but I just want to thank you for the good work that you did and done, and you continue to do for the community to keep Ventura County safe, under hand and do with safety, but it has to do with the type of service that you guys provide for us. You know, so I just want to thank all of you for an outstanding job.
The amount of work and experience that you have in doing this, the training that you do, and all of it being volunteered, too, I just really appreciate that. And then, obviously, our sheriff's department, too, leading the effort. Just lots of thanks for it. We're not always successful, but knowing that you're there and that you can do that has just really helped so much in our community, as you know. So thank you so much.
Let me also say that a lot of us go out on a hike, but you guys are out doing something. And that, I've been there, that's some of the roughest, roughest territory, people get hurt. Just, it's amazing that you guys would do that. So thank you for what you do do. Thank you very much.
And be careful out there.
I think we, you gentlemen have taken the time, and women have taken the time to come here. We really appreciate it. I think we'd like to do this right. Would you all please come down? I'd like to line everybody up here, and then we'll have the photographers there, and the board members will stand up back here, and we'll have a picture in the boardroom. But we'd like to have everybody come on down here. And Sheriff, will you do this? Gentlemen, if you'll turn your shoulders, you can come in a little bit tighter. We have a better chance of getting everybody in. have a better chance of getting everybody in. Do you tighten it down some, it'll come down, we'll do a picture. Okay, the next time certain item that we're going to go to is the recognition of our probation services week here in Ventura County, and we have a resolution here that I'll be presenting. We appreciate Mr. Maria being here this morning, and I know we have other people from the probation department here, we appreciate you being here also. But this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Ventura County proclaiming probation services week, July 13th to July 19th. This is an annual thing that we do, and I'll come down and present the resolution, but Mr. Maria.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Mark Varela, your chief probation officer. I have a few comments that I wanted to make in front of the board here before we continue on with the proclamation. On behalf of the 423 men and women of the Ventura County Probation Agency, I graciously accept the proclamation and recognition of probation services week. Since my start with the probation agency nearly 26 years ago, I've seen a lot of changes, a lot of changes within the organization, and a lot of changes, and certainly with probation profession statewide. The one thing that has remained constant through the years is the quality and the professionalism of the employees hired by this agency. These dedicated professionals, from our line-level officers to our executive team members, work really hard each day and manage the challenging and often changing workload demands. Our focus remains on the monitoring of the high-risk offenders within our community while creating meaningful opportunities for offenders to change their lives and build better futures for themselves and their families. We operate 24/7 juvenile and adult custodial facilities where the emphasis is not on serving time, but transformation, providing residents and inmates with valuable programming opportunities that are geared towards generating personal change and creating a desire to improve overall behavior. Our non-sworn support staff members play a vital role in the overall operation of the agency by providing technical, fiscal, clerical, and customer service support, which allows our sworn officers to perform their jobs at a high level while achieving favorable outcomes. We continue to seek ways of delivering services which produce better outcomes and show success at reducing recidivism. Collaboration and partnership with our justice, our local justice agencies, county partners, and community-based providers enhance our ability to achieve our goals. We are focused on being a main component within our local criminal justice system and an entity that comes to the table to help resolve problems within our communities. As always, I am grateful for the support that I receive by your board and by our CEO's office. Without your support, we could not perform the jobs that we are hired to do. Once again, thank you for this recognition and for acknowledging the efforts of the men and women of the probation agency who work hard each day to make our community a much safer place.
It's important that we stop once a year and have this week of recognition for probation and for all the tremendous and valuable contributions that leadership makes and all of the members of probation make. So, thank you all for being here today and participating in this, and I'll come down and present this, this resolution. Okay, can we have all the members of the agency come down and throw a picture here? All right, same thing that we just did. Won't we just line up right there, right? You're welcome to be in a picture if you'd like.
Mr. Chair, you know, I want to thank Mark Varela and his staff for the outstanding work they're doing in the probation department, and I want to thank you for, I know it's a very, very tough work that you do and probation, but I want to thank you for your outstanding work then. Thank you so much.
Mr. Powers?
Just to echo those comments of Mark and his leadership team and the whole department, really, I think a lot of people don't know the balance you strike of accountability and rehabilitative services, really getting to the root causes of challenges in people's lives and turning them around, so thank you.
I think that's the part that we miss, is that it's enforcement, but it's also, we're trying here to change people's lives, get them back on the right road, and I appreciate what you guys do, tremendous, tremendous efforts. Thank you.
Just, just appreciate the real hands-on approach, and that way, you're out there helping to keep our streets safe, too, so thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, thank you all very much. We're ready for our next item, which is item 26. I'm still protesting our, our kid finished second in the competition, the poster competition.
Good morning, board, I'm with Ventura County Junior Fair Board, my name is Brandon Pina, this is Elizabeth Fernandez, and we're here to present you with the 2014 Ventura County Fair poster. The winner of this poster is Chani Hang from Ventura, she is 15 years old. And there was over 150 different applications, or excuse me, different posters that were submitted, and this was the number one that they chose with the Ventura County Fair Board.
I can see why you chose it, that's really, that's, that's classy.
It was tough, though, there were some really good submissions.
Yes, there was.
They had a few of them, I guess, in the paper, but that, that is great, it's so nice. You wish you could almost take those second places and use them next year and all that, you've got these great ones.
Elizabeth's going to announce the events and different concerts that are going on.
So, the fair begins on July 30th and ends on August 10th, and all concerts and rodeos are free with fair admissions. We have a lot of great concerts going on, like Little Big Town and J-Go, and just to name a few. And then, we also have the PRCA rodeo. We have Dollar Day on July 30th, and then, we have a Youth Day on August 1st, and then we also have a $3 Before 3 Day on Wednesday, August 6th. So, we have a lot of great stuff going on there.
Great.
Do you guys have any questions?
Thanks for taking the time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for having us.
On behalf of the board, I'll be happy to take that post.
Thank you so much, very good work.
Thank you. Right down there is five. Used to be, when I first was here, every board member got a framed one each time, right?
And then, when we didn't get framed ones each time, they gave us rolled ones, so now we're down to one, and Supervisor Long has got a collection in her office, she's fighting you for it.
All righty, okay, we have about two or three minutes before our 10:30 time certain. We moved that all along pretty promptly there, right? In terms of the search and rescue and a sad... We have two minutes. Two minutes. All righty. Item 29, adoption of memorandum of agreement on International Union of Operating Engineers. Jose.
Good morning, board members. Jose Tabin-Cosio, County Executive Office. And with an accent, it's Jose Tabin. There we go. Good morning, board, CEO Mike Powers, stage of view all over again, right? The item before you is a recommendation for your board to hold a public hearing on the adoption of the First Amendment to the memorandum of agreement between the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 501, to waive the second hearing that's required under Article 20, Section 2006B of the Personal Rules and Regulations, and at the conclusion of today's hearing to adopt the terms of the amendment. IOE has a three-year agreement with the County of Ventura that was adopted by your board on September 10th, 2013, expiring August 9th, 2016. IOE, like SEIU in management, was an early adopter of the county's comprehensive county initiatives, which included overtime provisions, arrangement for the 50/50 cost-sharing, MBA adjustments, and so forth. At that time that your board adopted the IOE agreement, there was a commitment to maintain consistency amongst the various bargaining units. Since we adopted IOE, or your board adopted IOE, we have come to a settlement with seven other bargaining units, and so we invited IOE, like we did with SEIU, opportunity to come back to the bargaining table, to review their contract, to see if there can be some revisions to make them consistent with the newer agreement, or the agreements that were recently adopted, such as a management resolution. As a result of those discussions, we have the proposed amendments before your board today. Primarily, we're going to be changing the formula for the market-based adjustment to allow them, for employees to be eligible for the market-based adjustment of 1%, that would be due this year, as long as they're not more than 10% above market. We will maintain the educational incentive as a cash payment rather than a 401k contribution, and then, we will institute or implement overtime cost control enhancements for the IOE, where we exclude the retirement offsets and other cash payments from the contractual overtime rate. Again, that will help us control overtime costs. The IOE membership voted on this, and they did ratify in the amendment, and so we are presenting it to you today for a public hearing and adoption of that amendment, the conclusion of your hearing. The fiscal impact is neutral, since all these provisions were already reported to your board when it was adopted back in September. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Do you have any questions? I'd just like to point out one thing, that this is a good faith effort on the part of the county to try to reinforce people who became early adopters, to make sure that they know that they'll be treated fairly as the negotiating process goes forward. And I'd like to compliment our negotiators that have done this, yourself, Tabin, and Catherine, and Jim Dombowski, and then the leadership in the CEO's office. But I hope that, and I know that the unions do appreciate the fact that the trust goes up with, when we take actions like this and make sure everybody's treated fairly, and they're more likely to be confident in terms of early settlements for us in the future, so thank you very much. I'd move the recommended action, or I'll second the recommended action, supervisor Parks moved it, we're ready to vote. And that motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So, we're at the Lake Sherwood, item 30, the Lake Sherwood Community Services District application.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Reddy Pacala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. Item 30 and 31 are related to formation of a new county waterworks district. If a new waterworks district is approved, it will continue to provide the water supply to the community of Lake Sherwood. To comply with the changes in LAFCO law, and also to address some concerns from the existing homeowners in the older tracts, your board has previously authorized us to proceed with formation of County Waterworks District Number 38. We submitted the requested information to LAFCO in December of last year. A few months ago, LAFCO came back to us requesting for additional documents. Two items before you today includes all of the documentation we plan to submit to LAFCO so that they can proceed with the formation of Waterworks District and follow their process. We had RMA planning, and also LAFCO staff review, the staff reports in front of you, and the Lake Sherwood CSD Advisory Committee appointed by your board concurs with staff recommendation. That concludes my public presentation, I'm available to take any questions you have.
Do we have any questions for staff? All right, we have one public speaker, Douglas Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan. Good morning, Mr. Sullivan.
Hi, good, good morning. Thank you for having a time certain agenda item, it makes it easy for me to get here. You'll be amazed, I'm not opposed to this agenda item, but hopefully, I could put my input that we could tweak it a little bit. I'm one of the 221 houses, or houses being served by the Lake Sherwood Community Service District that are in the sphere of influence. There's a little history that, what probably Linda knows, and some of you may or may not know. When the district was created back in 1988 or '89, there was approximately about 221 lots that were in the, in the old part of Sherwood, the north and south shore. They were left in the sphere because there was worry that if, if the developers spent a lot of money on, on building, building new development, the voters could vote against it if they got 51%. So, we were put in the sphere, and the, and the gentleman's agreement was that we'd eventually be rolled into the new water district. So, that was supposed to take part in 1994, '95, that never happened. So, since that time, laws have changed. We have a new Community Services District law that changed in 2005. Prior to that, 2001, 56133 was enacted, which doesn't allow you to serve somebody in a sphere technically unless you have an agreement from LAFCO, which Reddy's talking about. So, my issue here is, I think we're rushing a judgment to create a whole new water district. We have a Community Services District that was created, and, and it's only serving one purpose, which is a water district. There's a lot, my neighbors are saying, if we, if we annex all the people in the older area, then we may have to pay for stuff in the new part of Sherwood that was developed, okay? We're going to spend a lot of money creating this new water district. There's legalities involved in that, because you can transfer assets from the water, from the Community Services District to the water district, I don't know all that stuff yet. But the system that we have now, it's a Community Services District, right now it has a independent board, which you guys sit on, all right? The new Community Services District law in, in 2005, which was written by Sheila Keough, Bill Number 135, which became the new, the law, stated that they didn't want dependent districts, they wanted, if you have, if, they want local control, they want people to vote for their local, local people on the board. We have an advisory vote, but it's still not, it's not, doesn't come under the, under what they call independent control. So, what I, what I'm concerned about is, is if we create a new water district, will it have the ability to have an independent board if it wants to or so chooses? Which we do have that ability now, if you guys, if there's a petition, or if the board of supervisors decide, hey, let the people vote and have in their own independent board. What I worry about is if we go to a water district, because that comes under the water code, it shows that there's independent boards, but I'm concerned that that may not happen. So, that's one of my concerns. My other concern is, the one thing that, that, there's a lot of money being spent here, it says 7150 for a fee, and then 2,600 for an annexation fee with LAFCO. There's a lot more expenses that we don't know about, there's staff time, there's your people's staff time, there's, there's Reddy, I'm sure Reddy spent probably a hundred, a couple hundred hours on this, and that's all not being... all not being shown on the balance sheet. The billing is going back to the CSD district, okay? Which, I'm not in the district legally, I'm in the sphere, so technically I have no voting rights in that district right now. So, what I'm concerned about is, is that by, by moving it to, moving all these assets over to the water district, we create, we're creating the same problem. One of the reasons, in your, in your packet, it says, the reason we're creating this is we don't want duplication of water services. We don't have a duplication of water services. We have one water district, it serves all the people in Sherwood. We keep that water district, keep it as a water district. You, you guys are the ones who do the bylaws on it. Make it a zone system, so that there's zones in this district. That's very easily done just by a Board of Supervisors meeting. And then, do an annexation of the 221 parcels that are outside the district in the sphere. It'd be a lot less money than what you're spending on a new water district. I know my neighbors will say, oh, we need a whole new water district, but it just seems like we're duplicating services. And then, what you're going to do is you're going to take the new Community Services District, and you're going to keep it active so that eventually the homeowners association could eventually use it to do services. Well, if that, if they want to, let them create their own Community Services District in future, why are we, why are we allowing them to have a free ticket to do that? I think what we should do is keep the existing Community Services District and annex in those houses, and do it by zone, so it's fair, so the people in north and south shore that are in the existing neighborhoods are in a zone, and everybody has particular voting rights. So, that's my concern. My main concern is, if, and then if, the other thing is ownership of the new water district. If, if we transfer the Lake Sherwood Community Services District, I, half the people in Sherwood, the people that live in the newer houses paid for that district through bond on their property tax bill, it was 1.25%. So, that got paid off in 2009. There's, there's about $800,000 sitting there, they need to be refunded also. But what I worry about is, who owns the water district? If you transfer it to the Ventura County Waterworks District, is it now property of the Ventura County, or is it still property of the people of Lake Sherwood? So, there's a lot of questions I have. I may get together Reddy and answer them, but I think you're jumping, I think there's a lot of time and a lot of money being spent on, on creating a water district. When you have, you have everything in front of you, you can just leave it the way it is and amend it and modify it in such a way that will, will keep everybody happy. So, that's what I'm here to talk about. That's what I...
Thanks for your testimony, Mr. Sullivan. Supervisor Parks and Mr. Pacala, do you guys want to respond in any way?
I'll be happy to. The point of it is that the Community Service District was set up originally to provide a lot of other services besides water service. And the gated community has the need for a lot of those services that the folks outside the gates don't need.
Okay.
And the concern is from the people outside the gates, that they don't want to be saddled with having to pay for things like security, and the gates, and things that are on the inside, which is the original intent of the CSD. So, keeping the CSD in place so that it can serve the needs of its original intent takes care of the reason why we want to keep the CSD there. The reason why we're establishing a separate waterworks district that would only do water relieves the concerns of those people outside the gate from having to take on that cost, the potential costs of, of services that aren't water services. And that was a very severe concern. It goes back to the Brueder Agreement, and that would make it moot. So, this is, was presented to us by the Lake Sherwood Community Association. They were very interested in seeing that they could be protected from the potential of having a CSD board that they aren't on the majority on, requiring them to pay for costs that they would receive no benefits from. And this makes it very clean. We have waterworks districts throughout the county that address specifically just water. And this has gone before LAFCO through permissions, as well as the Board of Supervisors. This particular item is doing some cleanup. In addition, and that's my response to you, in addition, we also had a letter from Nathan Boren, and he wanted to widen the district to incorporate Carlisle Canyon, Carlisle Road and Carlisle Canyon. And I know that, just like many places in the county and incorporated area, we don't bring water service there. If there is an application, we can consider it at that time, but we wouldn't just voluntarily bring water services. He mentions the idea you could have more fire hydrant, or you could have fire hydrants on Carlisle Road. I know there is a fire hydrant at the intersection of Carlisle and Decker, and talking with the fire department, too, they would bring in their own water where necessary. They've got Lake Sherwood, that they do some good helicopter pickups with water and all there, too. So, this, to me, is just a, obviously, would have come to us in the last time we voted in 2013, I think, but we left out this one item with the, which will include the item 31 on the taxes, too, that have to be transferred in addition to the requirements of LAFCO.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I just...
Thanks for your testimony.
The district right now is only one service, which is watered. It has no other, no other jurisdiction on any of their services. There's no other thing. It can't do anything else unless you vote on it.
Thanks, Mr. Sullivan. I'm sorry, yeah, you're, you're, yeah.
Okay.
Your five minutes is up. All righty. Supervisor Foy.
She gave a pretty good explanation. I don't know if you're adding anything.
Well, I was going to respond to another question about the costs. Under the existing structure, we have any vacant parcel that wants to receive water supply, they have to go through annexation process piece by, piecemeal by piecemeal. For example, every parcel who comes to us for water supply, we have to go through LAFCO. It may cost as much as $10,000 per parcel to annex. What the proposal in front of you does is combines all of these parcels and not go through annexation piecemeal. Your board has previously approved $880 of charges for these vacant parcels, and will continue to charge the $880 per parcels. There are about 57 vacant parcels, which are outside the CSD. So, those charges will pay for the cost, thus being absorbed by CSD at this time for all of the LAFCO costs.
Thank you. All right. You ready? It's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote.
One of the big things you got done, huh?
Thank you.
Really is one of the big things he's gotten done on his way to retirement. Thank you for sticking in there. It's not an easy one.
Now, we need to vote on item 31, or we need to...
31 is a...
It's, it's, it's related. Yeah, what we need to do. All righty. So, 30 and 31 have both been approved. All right? And I'm happy to say that we are done with our agenda. We get to go into closed session. APCD at 1:30. Could you, could you put that on here? Tell me when you're ready. With a vast authority invested in this position, I call this meeting back to order. Leroy, you have an announcement for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. There's an announcement on item 32, which is a pending litigation case, Reynoso versus County of Ventura, Ventura Superior Court, Case Number 56201300436726. And the board has approved a settlement of that case. In exchange for dismissal and release by Reynoso, the county will pay $50,000 total for all costs, and use its best effort to find a new position for Ms. Reynoso. And the vote of the board was four to zero. Supervisor Long was absent.
Thank you. We'll go back into closed session. And we'll adjourn from closed session. There'll be no further...